Followed by some subsequent action, so, okay.
Councilor Curry? No items, okay, and I had none, as I said. So let's move on to our second item on study session. Intersection site distance and code enforcement. I see some code enforcement. I see some police people.
We do have some.
Who's giving our staff report?
We do. John?
John Kappeler.
And the reason this is on the study session is because there have been some issues recently in Corona del Mar in particular regarding certain landscaping issues that seem to never go away because some neighbor is always mad regardless of what.
What, we have mad neighbors in town? Well, I find that hard to believe.
They're mad at each other, but they're also mad at staff. So, Councilwoman Gardner, you know, said maybe we need to talk about some of these issues, site issues, and also landscaping complaints we get.
Sure. Thank you, Homer. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. John Kappeler, Code and Water Quality Enforcement Division. I kind of want to address two topics at the study session today. The first one is we have a code enforcement council policy, and that's policy K9. It's been in existence since June of 95, so we may want to take a look at that policy. I'll explain a little bit more. Then I'm going to transition into kind of the intersection site distance and why that applies to code enforcement is we get involved in zoning regulations, height requirements and front yard setbacks, and that dovetails with Public Works in their site distance requirements. So let me go first to council policy K9. What this policy does is it directs the public on how to submit complaints to the code enforcement department, and really it boils down to we require complaints in writing. And I probably should read a paragraph real quick for you. It says, "Code enforcement complaints shall be made in writing and identify the complainant, specify the facts, acts, events, and occurrences which establish the violation and describe any documentation which would establish a violation or is otherwise required by law." That's kind of really the heart of it. When the public calls in with a complaint, we ask them to put that in writing. And the reason we do that is it helps us so we don't get into a position of selective enforcement. If a neighbor has a complaint on a height requirement and a front yard setback, they submit a complaint to us, we go in and investigate that complaint. Now, what I also need to explain to you folks is that this does not, this does not talk about proactive enforcement. So when we're out in the field and the things that we see, what we've done typically is we've been proactive in certain areas of the municipal code, but not the entire municipal code, and that's largely based on the breadth of the municipal code and staff time. A good example would be water quality. If we see a water quality violation, we certainly stop, we address the issue, we don't drive by because we don't have a complaint in writing. We also are proactive with beach vendors, the folks that are selling boogie boards in the summer on the beach, commercial photographers in Corona del Mar. We've got lots and lots of complaints against those folks. They're down there without a permit. They're impacting the public's right to enjoy the beach, so we're proactive there. We're proactive with a lot of the nuisance code. That kind of helps the fire department with weed abatement issues, water quality I mentioned. We're proactive, a lot of the signage, real estate signs, signs for establishments on Marine Avenue in Balboa Island, Corona del Mar. And that gets confusing to people sometime because if we get a complaint on a landscaping issue and we go out and we address that and we say, "You've got to trim this down, it's over height," well then a resident says, "Well, there's like 200 more of these in Corona del Mar." And they're quite possibly could be, and our answer is, if you submit a complaint in writing, we're more than happy to take a look at that for you. And sometimes they like that answer and sometimes they don't. But again, it's all based on selective enforcement. We don't want to be accused of picking on someone. We're there because we have a complaint in writing and it's an issue that we're going to address. So that's something I really want to clarify for you folks. That kind of dovetails into the site distance presentation that Public Works is going to give because.
Get there, I have a question.
Sure.
So as far as proactive, you're driving around and there's a garage, and there are two huge planters in the driveway. I mean, the kind of planters that obviously you don't just pick up and move because you're putting your car in. And there's a bench there, and it's, whatever it is, is no longer a garage. Now, would you on your own do anything about that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. A good example is I was out yesterday, a property we're having a public, a nuisance problem with. I drove around the property, I drove down the alley, three doors down on the right, the garage door was open. It was a complete illegal conversion. There was a kitchen in there, there was a bed in there, there was a guy sleeping in there. I'm going to address that issue, I'm not going to drive down the street. But the landscaping issues get more complicated. I can't drive down a street and say, "That's a violation, that isn't, that isn't." We have to look into them. Are they really over height? Is it legal nonconforming? Do they have a variance? Councilmember Gardner, your house is a perfect example. I have to say this. I had to drop off.
Busted.
I had to drop off some documents for Ms. Gardner. I pulled up to her house and I thought, "Oh, my gosh, there's 10 violations in her front yard, plain as day." Well, in talking with her, how am I going to deal with this? She has an easement, so, but I don't, you know, you have to take a look at that kind of stuff, so.
Okay, so John, you're not here before us today to ask us to be proactive about everything because that opens a whole new can of worms.
That does. What I think I would like to ask is that you folks take a look at this council policy, and if you have any additions or changes, I would certainly welcome that. Again, it's a 12-year-old policy. We made a minor change last fall. The original policy required a complaint in writing on a form provided by the city. Well, with the internet and email, that's kind of cumbersome, so we changed that language. But we haven't really had any updates in quite a while on this policy.
I think that staff would also like to hear if council thinks that the things that we are addressing proactively through our own field observations are the right things to be addressing that way. Are there some of those that you think we should do only through complaint? Are there other things you'd like us to be more proactive about?
Do you want to know that now or at the end?
Whenever it's more, it might be more convenient to do it now and then set that aside and move on to the site distance questions.
All right, well, I know just recently, for instance, the West Newport Beach Association sent in a letter, I think it may have gone to you, I know, regardless, sent in a letter to the city requesting that we do a little bit more as far as enforcing the rules around trash cans being put out, when they're put out. I know trash can lids are a big issue, certainly in West Newport. You know, I know there was a big push a while back to have those things put out of sight or at least, you know, far enough back from the property line so that they weren't readily visible and, you know, I think there was some enforcement at the time, but it seems to have waned. And I don't know if it's a resource issue or just a focus issue or what.
Probably a little both. We have dealt with trash can lids before, but, oh, my gosh, I mean, we could spend the next year working on that, and I'd be happy to do it. We have dealt with them on a complaint basis. They're a touchy issue. Balboa Island, for example, we got a complaint rather recently, and we got in contact with the property owner. Turns out it's a second home or a weekend home. The folks come down for the weekend, they put their trash cans out, and they leave and pickup may not be till Tuesday or Wednesday. So they're out there, and then they, they say the same thing that most other people say, "Well, there's 200 trash cans one block over with no lids on those, what are you going to do about those?" So if it's a priority for the council, then absolutely, it's not a problem.
I think it's a priority for the residents in West Newport. I mean, I, you know, I mean, if it's a staffing issue and we need to address that, that's one thing, but, I mean, it does affect the overall look of the neighborhood. And some neighbors are very good about it, and some obviously are not so good. Some, you know, the trash cans never get put away, or they do, you know, at the back of the alley, they don't have lids, or there's an accumulation of things that, you know, our trash guys won't take, like beds or furniture or larger object, refrigerators, dishwashers, you know, the whole gamut of things.
Mr. Mayor, the code enforcement division is at the forefront of our enforcement efforts, but other departments participate as well. And we did several years ago establish a position in the General Services Department that was focusing on these kinds of issues, and I think that over time that the duties of that position may have broadened and so the focus may not be what it had been at the time. But we were aware of that, and within the next week or so, we have a meeting scheduled of all the code enforcement staff citywide to coordinate and talk about these issues and who really has the lead on things.
Well, it's certainly a problem that I hope we can address. Do you want to say something, Mike?
Yes, I guess I'm curious how you would characterize the level of proactivity on.
We're going to be proactive in that regard, but it's really complaint basis because, again, from public right away, we can't, we can't see anything illegal activity. We do work weekends as well, and if we see construction on a weekend, we will pay particular attention to that. Not only is it a violation of the noise ordinance, but folks tend to do this kind of work on weekends when the building inspectors aren't around. So I would think we're as proactive as we can be, and I'd certainly welcome any suggestions on how we could be more proactive because illegal dwelling units probably two or three years ago have become a pretty big deal for us. We've got, I know we have 20 going on right now, at least, and probably a few more, and we got, matter of fact, we've got two today in Corona del Mar.
20 investigations, you mean?
Investigations open.
Active complaints?
Yes, correct, for illegal dwelling units.
John, I will, I do want to commend you on two issues that happened in my district. One was on Bayview where we had public enemy number one living there, the gang. And then the other one is this situation in Orchard where we have all these illegal rooms going on. So I really appreciate you guys really handled those situations really well.
Oh, thank you very much. That was a long investigation.
It was, thank you.
But do you feel like there's a resource issue in keeping up with the totality of what you need to work on there?
No, I think we're okay. The illegal dwelling units have really maintained for a couple of years now. Again, I would struggle on how we could be more proactive because I'll bet you nickel there are a lot more out there. And a gentleman from Santa Monica told me they have something like, they've estimated a couple thousand within a 10-mile square distance, so it's a problem for other cities as well. I just don't know how we could be more proactive because unless we can view something from the public right away.
Three mailboxes on a duplex.
Three mailboxes on a duplex. I did one of those last week, so there's a pretty good indicator right there. I will say with the establishment of the IROC, I think residents are becoming more knowledgeable on the code and permitted uses, so complaints may increase just based on general public knowledge, but that's a guesstimate on my part.
I would add that even though I don't think the staff has become more proactive in spotting illegal dwelling units recently, I would say that John is leading his staff to become more aggressive on the tougher cases where the property owners don't respond quickly. And so we're seeing more of the kind of thing that Councilmember Daigle mentioned where we're using inspection warrants, we're filing lawsuits, we're using the public nuisance process. And those things do take a lot of preparation time because you have to have your affidavits and all your documents in order, so that's more desk time for the officers. So if, and we're getting results from those things, so it's encouraging, but if we continue to follow that approach, then we may see that we need more resources. For the time being, I think we're okay.
One of the things I'd like to get a better handle on today, and it may come after the site thing, but is this whole thing about landscaping as screening. Because we have, there was an incident in my district where someone, there were site problems, but then also they were just seeing this arbitrary, "Well, it shouldn't be so high." And he had planted a screen from a commercial area, you know, he has, his house is, here's his house, here's the alley, here's the pizza place or something, and he planted to make a landscape screen, which seems to me something most of us would do for psychological and aesthetic distancing. And yet, my understanding was that there are still, even there are height issues and permeability issues, you have to be able to see through a certain amount, so I'd like to get clarity on that. And then the other issue I'd like is to understand what we don't do. This is something that I emailed John about earlier, but we don't get into property line disputes if someone says, "This is my property, that's not my property." They're not to call you. That's between them and their neighbor. Is that correct?
Yes, that is.
Okay.
The landscaping issue is a pretty tough one. The one particular case we worked on together, it really took, gosh, about a year we worked on it. And it got complicated because the code speaks to, well, I'll read it. "Fences, walls, hedges, and accessory structures shall be limited to three feet in height above natural grade in all required front yard setbacks." This particular case, the property owner said, "These aren't hedges, they're trees." The complaining party said, "Well, these are hedges, these are trees that are planted to form a hedge." So we had to get the Parks Department involved, and it got rather complicated. The other thing in the code, and this does make me nervous, and let me read this sentence as well. "In all required front yard setbacks, which must be at least 40 percent open." So there's an opacity requirement for the top couple feet of the landscaping. And quite honestly, there's, that's really based on the officer's observation out in the field. I have no way to measure opacity. I can't tell you if it's 39 percent or 40 percent or 41 percent. So that really has been a concern for a long time, but unlike a noise measurement where we go out with a noise meter, I can't say black and white, yes, this has met the 40 percent opacity. So that's always something we have to work, work on on a case-by-case basis. And then for your second question, a lot of the fences, walls and stuff on the property lines, those are civil issues between the property owners. We get into, we get into some situations where they're rebuilding a house next door, they've demoed it, they want to put up a new block wall. Building code requires a footer of X width, so you kind of have to go on the property and maybe they make a mess, maybe they don't, and the property owners kind of, that becomes a tough issue, and that's usually with rebuilding of walls and a lot of property line issues, but those are civil issues that property owners need to figure out themselves.
My concern about this hedge height issue and the opacity and that is that particularly in Corona del Mar, there are so many violations. And I don't know whether we get to a point with something like this where it's like the speed limit. At a certain point, you go, "Okay, this is now a 45 zone, or no sense, we can pretend it's a 35 zone." And that in certain areas, do we change that regulation that if you do back up, then you can have, as long as you keep your sight lines, you can have a screen, and we're not going to worry about the opacity of it because the only thing you're blocking is a view of the pizza place, and maybe your neighbors aren't interested in that anyway, so. That would be one of my concerns, because I do think it's hard, it's one thing if you see, "Oh, well, I know there are other violations in the city." But when you see, I mean, literally hundreds of people doing the same thing that you've been cited for just because your neighbor wants to annoy you or something, I think that's an issue too that we may need to address at some point, just saying, "Okay, in certain areas, you get to have higher hedges."
And I certainly do agree with that, with that, Ms. Gardner. The one particular incident, the gentleman said, "Well, there are 200 violations." My response was, "Sir, if you'll put a complaint in writing, I'm more than happy to look into all of them for you, but we're not going to drop everything we're doing today and look at every landscaping issue in Corona del Mar." Now, if the council would prefer we take on a couple of special projects like landscaping issues in Corona del Mar, the Peninsula, trash cans.
Trash cans, yeah.
And nuisance code stuff in West Newport, then absolutely, that's not a problem.
At least landscaping looks nice. Trash cans do not look nice.
No, I don't want you to take on the landscaping issue. Unless you have ideas of how you would perhaps reword or rephrase an ordinance that would get, make it more flexible for us, that might be something to consider down the road.
Well, and that may be something that we do in the new zoning code because there are policies in the general plan that talk about providing buffering between commercial and residential areas, and maybe there could be special exceptions for those areas. But, you know, there are a few issues on the landscaping. One is that screening or buffering issue, and then there's just one of the look and feel and character of the neighborhood. Do we want to have an open look as you drive down the street or let everyone kind of wall off their own property?
Right.
And then there's the safety issue that Public Works will be talking about.
We would need to consider sight lines, and I agree. I mean, front yards particularly, I'm concerned, we wouldn't want to have high, high hedges that you can't see beyond. But as I say, we might want to make this exception for these buffers. And I think the zoning might be a perfect time to work on that.
Why don't we see more of these issues in some of the planned communities? Is it because of the HOAs that are a little more active?
Yeah, I think so, and plants grow, quite frankly. And Corona del Mar, for example, is an older area of the city, and you just see a more mature landscaping. Maybe the planned communities have an HOA with regular landscape maintenance, for example. It may just be simply the age of the area. Because we do see these issues mostly in Corona del Mar and the Peninsula, for example. And there are, for example, in Santa Ana Heights, a lot of your setbacks are 25 feet, so it may be a function of the front yard setbacks as well. They're more minimal, if you will, down there. That's about all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Good afternoon, council. Tony Bryant with the Public Works Department. I'm going to try and work my way through a PowerPoint presentation and discuss with you the intersection site distance requirements as Public Works has them. We have, in Public Works, we have a standard plan that talks about intersection site distance and lays out requirements for a clear line of visibility or a clear line of sight, and talks about obstructions that would fall within what is called the limited use area. And this is what the standard plan looks like. The dashed out area here, here, also in the median, that's what's defined as the limited use area, and that is the area, and again, this is a curve in this location. So it can change depending on if you've got a straight section or a curved section where that limited use area is. And the requirements that we have in our standard plan are that, and here's number six, "Plants and shrubs that will be of the, shall be of the type that will grow no higher than 24 inches above the ground within the limited use area." The way it's defined in the standard plan, if you look at point A here, that's the point that we look at as the driver's location. So at that point, that's where the driver is starting to look at, up the street, looking for their clear line of visibility, their clear line of sight. The way the plan is written today, that point A is located 10 feet behind the property line extension. So that can actually place the driver well back of the curb line, 15 to 20 feet back of the curb line. Again, in residential neighborhoods, which is the focus, these are the types of restrictions, obstructions that are not allowed within that limited use area. They can also include walls, fences, ungraded slopes, anything that obstructs the line of sight. Another thing that we want to talk about today as well is that the issue of parked vehicles, and I've got some photographs and we'll move forward to that. But another thing that you cannot pass by when you discuss line of sight is on-street parked vehicles. And the existing standard plan does not discuss or address parked vehicles as an issue. I've got a few photographs here. All of these photographs are in Corona del Mar. This is a location where, again, coming back to the standard plan, this is where the driver would be sitting behind the property line and looking up the street. And you would see that they've got two obstructions here so their visibility on the street, they've got the landscaping hedge, which is clearly above 24 inches, and they've got some on-street parking. And if you'll notice, again, in this particular picture, there's some red curb there, but in Corona del Mar, that red curb is very limited. There are streets that have five feet of red curb at the corners and some that have 10. 10 would pretty much be the maximum amount of red curb at the corners in Corona del Mar. So the on-street parking can come very close to the corners in Corona del Mar, and that can be a real factor in site distance. This would be pulling forward, the driver pulling forward, then with their line of sight behind the curb line, it does take out the landscaping as an issue with on-street parking. So again, the further the driver pulls forward, the more that the on-street parking becomes an issue and the less that the landscaping becomes an issue. There's some different observations in the areas. This will be coming out of an alley and looking at some landscaping that is right near the corner of the alley and the street. A parked vehicle at an alley exiting out onto one of the numbered streets in Corona del Mar. Again, the question is, do we really look at any type of parking restrictions to try and address parked vehicles that are right up to the corner and open up the line of sight?
Tony, I've noticed in Corona del Mar, especially with the larger vehicles, the truck or the SUV, when you have one parked at the corner and you're making a right-hand turn, you have to go, you know, around, and you really don't have visibility as to whether there's a car coming. It's a.
That's exactly, that's exactly the issue that we're talking about today that really hasn't been addressed with the standard plan that we have is on-street parked vehicles. And I don't really want to get away from the landscaping too much, but they really go hand in hand when you talk about line of sight. Again, this is some different situations where you have landscaping at the back of curb. There's some landscaping with a parked car that limits the line of sight. Here's some walls or more permanent types of construction that can restrict the line of sight. This is not permanent, obviously, but it's a, there are a few different situations where the, there are things that are put up on the property line that can obstruct the line of sight.
What creates a more safe condition for pedestrians? One of the things I'm concerned about, you're traveling along here, you're going to take a right turn, and you see it's clear on the left, and you just whip around that corner. Is there anything that can be done to sort of mitigate that from happening?
To mitigate, well, if you're stopped, you're looking to the left, and you turn, and there's someone coming the other way?
Right. What I, walking myself, what I experience a lot is someone's here and they want to take a right turn, and as soon as they see the left is clear, they just go right around the corner.
And they don't see the pedestrian?
Right.
That's what you're talking about? Well, we'll get back into, there are standards currently in the zoning code that address providing a clear line of sight for the side block as well. And again, this really is another situation where you've got these different types of things that are happening that are not enforced or they've been there for some time, and that yet there is language in the zoning code that covers that, but it's not really being So I guess the question we have then, if you look at Public Works' standard plan, is is the existing standard plan too conservative from the way that we look at the line of sight and what we would consider to be an obstruction within the line of sight, and that would include landscaping? Because again, replacing the driver's eye anywhere from 15 to 20 feet behind the curb line, and that's where we're saying, that's where the driver is looking down the street, and you're certainly going to see landscaping within that corner area, and in many cases, as we've seen in the photographs, there are a lot of situations where that landscaping is above 24 inches in height. And based on our standard, then we would have to look at whether there would be some type of action taken with situations like that. So then what we looked at is, is there a way that, or should we draft what we would think of as a more realistic standard plan that is really based on the way that residents would approach an intersection, would stop at, and then would proceed into the intersection again, slowly proceed in to where they can see around a parked vehicle and then go through, especially in an area like Corona del Mar or even on the Balboa Peninsula when you're coming out onto Balboa Boulevard. You're not going to dart right out into the street. You're going to come up to the stop, then you're going to proceed out, then you're going to see if you've got the visibility, then you're going to go. And we're looking at, should we prepare a standard plan that is more realistic to the way people are driving? And then that standard could include some red curb recommendations that would address parked vehicles. So it becomes now, are we more realistically addressing landscaping and are we addressing parked vehicles at the same time?
Tony, if you go down any street, particularly in Corona del Mar or Balboa Island, for example, the parking isn't used very, very efficiently because there's no marked parking spaces in those streets.
Right.
So you don't use the parking very efficiently. It seems that if you needed more site distance, you could, you could probably put marked parking spaces on the street so you wouldn't lose any practical use of the street for parking.
Right.
And get additional site distance at the intersections. Have you ever looked at that at all?
I think there have been situations where people have brought it up as a possibility, and I think that it comes back to just maintaining that striping. It's a lot of striping to add to streets. It's a lot of striping to add to streets, and it's a lot more striping to maintain. And, you know, if we wanted to look at site distance at intersections, and we have, then we try to provide that, the parking restrictions at the corner, and then we've provided a segment of the curb for parking, and then, you know, there is a set amount of space that people can park in, and they, that's the way that people park, but we haven't really proceeded with any type of parking stall markings.
And if I could chime in too, Tony, one of the things, when you mark the parking Ts, you have to mark it for the largest vehicle, which is essentially a 20 to 22-foot vehicle. And you can imagine, three marked parking spaces for a 20-foot vehicle, 60 spaces, you could park four Hondas in that same space. So in a way, when you do actually do the parking Ts, you can, the negative effect could be, you could be eliminating some parking in those areas for, you know, if more cars can happen to crawl in. That's typically why we just use the red curb at the intersections to kind of say, okay, here's as close as you can get, folks, and however way you can fit it, great. Now, some folks are better at that, another, and I think that's kind of what you're getting at, is sometimes that folks don't do a very good job of leaving space and there is space wasted. So it's kind of a toss-up. Right.
I recently had some education about red paint on curbs from Steve, but I can't say that my education is complete. I will say this, the parking site distance issue is very significant on Balboa Peninsula, the T Streets coming out onto the Boulevard. My wife, who is not a very adventuresome driver to start with, tends to try to plan her driving for Tuesday mornings because when she pulls out of 10th Street to turn left to go down the peninsula, there's no cars parked there. And every other part of the day, it seems like every day, there is a huge SUV parked right next to the end of the red paint. I am an adventurous driver, and I still have trouble seeing past those cars, especially the big ones. You can, you can stop and you can inch your way out, but you can still wind up with three feet of car out there in the lane before you can see what's coming, and it really is a serious issue that I, for one, would like better addressed for the peninsula. But in conjunction with that, I do have a question. How do we balance the potential loss of parking by extended red curbs against people like the Coastal Commission and residents particularly that don't want to lose the parking spaces? How do we balance those issues? Is there a, is there a legal conflict issue with people like the Coastal Commission as we try to address safety issues here?
I think I can answer that one, Councilman. In the case of, if it's purely a safety issue, the Coastal Commission generally doesn't fight us about it. You know, there's some real legitimate reasons why you need to have red curb for safety. I think they would be probably in a bad spot trying to go up against a safety issue just for the sake of parking. I think there is a happy compromise, though, and I think that's where Tony's kind of leading us here, is that our current site distance standard, if you applied it to any one of these streets, you'd have 200 feet of red curb. So our thought is, well, let's see, if we could figure out, how far can you pull out there without being unsafe and still see down the street, and what is that minimum? And I think that's kind of where we're heading, to kind of have a happy balance between safety and parking. And I think that's what we're trying to achieve tonight because we know that our existing standard, if we applied that to any street, Balboa or Corona Del Mar, the local streets, there wouldn't be any parking at all. So obviously, we know we don't want to do that. And it would probably be deemed as unreasonable, but I think if we can come up with a reasonable standard, maybe there's some room for agreement even with folks like the Coastal Commission.
Steve, I would just note that while I think you're looking for us to give you some direction on a standard, I think these really are neighborhood-specific issues. In port streets where intersection obstruction is a big issue also, I mean, those are the types of issues that could be addressed with red paint and with more aggressive enforcement on landscaping and that kind of thing. You know, those same techniques may not be as effective or as needed or as wanted by the residents in Corona Del Mar or Balboa Island where other techniques might need to be applied. And I think we need to have some dialogue with the homeowners associations, residents associations on those topics and lay out the alternatives for them because they share the concerns as Councilmember Hannah said. But we need to be very careful for, about techniques that are going to negatively impact parking, particularly in Corona Del Mar and Balboa.
Well, I, I, thank you. I agree, though, we need to do something because I'm someone who has to, I can't see as I come out the alley, and I'm always amazed that none of us, somehow we all make it because, as you say, we were very, very careful. But one thing that did concern me is in one of your slides, there was a fence, a post that was stonework, that one. Now, that's obviously a fairly new fence. Are we not being consistent when we look at these things? I mean, if we're calling for a two-foot height, that's over two feet.
Right, and I, and I think, well, there's a case where it's, it would appear to me that it falls within the front yard setback, and it's above three feet in height, so I can't answer the question as to something like that and how it was permitted in the construct.
Quite often, a lot of these things appear, and we don't have, in Public Works and in code enforcement, we don't have the manpower to cruise the streets looking for new construction. And you can imagine, you know, I think someone sees something that's illegal and they say, gee, I want to do that too, and they don't even realize that they need to get a permit or approval from the city. And we do catch some of it. Our inspectors driving around town will see new construction, they'll stop, say, hey, what's going on, and find out. And some of these things can be permitted if they're low enough. Like you see in this picture, if you took the flower bowl off the top there, you probably were, you'd probably be okay with site distance. But when the flower bowl gets put on, well, I bet you that didn't show up in a plan. So those are the kinds of things we're dealing with, is folks creative solutions to their own beautification issues and not realizing that they're actually creating a hazard. Another hazard that you'd see here, and if it was a little higher, is the pedestrians. I mean, we hear reports of, you know, a bicyclist on one sidewalk and a pedestrian on another. They can't see each other, they get to that middle point, and there's an accident. And typically, those don't get recorded in the, you know, police records, but they do happen and we do hear of them. So there's kind of two issues we're looking at here, is pedestrian safety along with vehicle safety.
Well, that's obviously an important issue, but I'm wondering, I would be for, at least in Corona Del Mar, as a resident there, of some more red striping. But I'm wondering, is this a real issue when it comes to cars, at least in our area? Are we seeing a lot of, I mean, as I say, I don't see many accidents from that. We're all very, just slow getting out, maybe. Do we see?
Right.
Do you have any idea of how many accidents we get?
I don't, I don't think we've seen a high number or a history of a high number of accidents in, at the intersections in Corona Del Mar. And so that's where the balance has been, we've discussed the balance of parking and site distance over the years, has been that, the question has been, well, which, which way do you lean? Do you lean towards the parking or do you lean towards the safety issues? And in the past, the lean has been towards the parking. So the question now is, well, if we're going to look at site distance and we want to look at landscaping and then let's bring on-street parked cars, how do we want to address that parking issue? How do we want to balance the safety and the, and the on-street parking requirements? And we were tending to focus right now, at least looking at Corona Del Mar and also Balboa Peninsula, only because those are the heavier demand parking areas in the city. And so they'll be usually more fully parked, and you'll see more cars up to the, to the corner itself because that's the way the area is parked.
Tony, I've got to believe, though, that there are a number of accidents, but they are low-speed accidents and the damage is pretty minor, and they probably don't end up in a, in a police report, and people just, you know, settle and, okay, I'm at fault and I'll take care of it because I just can't believe that there aren't a lot of fender benders.
There is, there is one other aspect of this, and that's the variability of the current conditions. I think the red paint, as Steve and I know, the red paint is all over the map in terms of how much red paint there is at any given intersection. Some of it has to do simply with parking, but a lot of it, I think, has to do with safety-related, and that's particularly where I think we should be focused, is to try and bring more consistency with how we approach it, along with maybe some better balance.
Steve, did I understand you correctly that, that even though we have a standard plan that we can, for site distance, we can red curb up to 200 feet? If we change any of the red curbing, we got to go to the Coastal Commission and get a permit to do that?
No, I think that...
Or we can do it anywhere within the 200 feet without going to the Coastal Commission?
Well, we have an accepted standard plan right now that is very conservative, and I really look at it as more of a, something that works on arterial highways. If we applied that same plan to local streets, we would end up with quite a bit of red curb. And I think we'd be well within our authority to do that on a safety basis, and maybe the attorney wants to weigh in. Yeah, I, we routinely do red curb all the time. We wouldn't eliminate parking just because some resident doesn't like parking in front of their house. We generally do it for, it has to be a safety or access issue. They can't get into their garage, we give them three feet of red curb. If the three-foot of red curb makes it so there isn't a legal parking space left, we generally paint the whole piece.
So what you're saying, as long as we stay within that standard, we don't have to go to the Coastal Commission?
Yeah.
That's, that's my main question.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's probably reasonable.
So basically, anything we're talking about here is exempt from the Coastal Commission?
That'd be correct.
This is, this is, these are two alternatives that we looked at in terms of, well, if we were to redo the standard and we wanted to look at parking and what the parking impacts could be, then there are different alternatives in terms of where the driver's, what we call the driver's eye would be. The top one is if you looked at the car, the front of the car, which is right on the extension of the parked vehicle. So that's the type of situation we're talking about, where people kind of pull up and stop and then pull out a little bit farther as much as they feel they can, and then look for that site distance and then go. In many cases, the existing red curb that we have here can be 20 feet or 10 feet, or, but again, it's not consistent, like, like Councilmember said. And the question is, should it be consistent? Should we be looking at a number that will then give us a line of sight and a distance that we're comfortable with, provides an adequate stopping distance? This is, this is one alternative that brings the driver's eye seven feet back from that extension, and then depending on the, the speed of the roadway, if it's a 30 or 25, you'd have different lengths of red curb to the left and to the right. When we talk about 30 to 40 feet of red curb, we're talking about, well, depending on what's out there, it could be one to two spaces of parking at that particular corner. On this corner, it could be one space, but in some cases, we already have red curb there. We may not be affecting parking. And then this is the much more conservative method where you're pulling the driver's eye back from the curb line and you're drawing that line up the roadway. And with this pulling the driver's eye back, now you're talking about more, double the red curb on this side, slightly more of red curb that would be required.
Can you still see the sidewalk on, on both of them for pedestrians?
You can, well, in this case, you see where the line of sight is.
So you wouldn't?
Clearly see the sidewalk here. On the other one, you can see a distance of that sidewalk.
Because that's my concern, particularly for Corona Del Mar. We are a very pedestrian-oriented village, lot of bicycles, and as I say, I know coming out of my alley, I have no clue if pedestrians are coming, so I just automatically stop. But then I'm, you know, I'm an older person that would do that, whereas I would think some younger people are in a hurry, they're not going to think about the pedestrians or just think about getting to work in the morning or something, and you cannot see. And unless pedestrians are really clued in, if they're locals, they probably are clued in to stop at every alleyway because they know that somebody might not be able to see them. But I would like to see more red safety issue, striping in our village. And I know that that would, there would be some discussions about the parking aspects of it, but I think it is something that would be welcome because we, as I say, we are pedestrian-oriented.
Right. So these are two different alternatives that can be looked at in terms of changing the, the standard plan. And really what we're looking at is just having a standard plan for local streets. We have the standard plan that we have today covers arterial roadways and local streets. We're not looking at changing the standards for arterials, we're only looking at changing and providing a new standard for local streets. This is that situation you were talking about where you're coming out of an alley onto a street, and the way the zoning code is written today, it actually requires a 15 by 15 triangle where there should not be obstructions that are greater than three feet in height. And from going out and taking a look around areas like Corona Del Mar, we know there's many situations where those exist. And if you had that type of clear line of sight in those particular areas, then there wouldn't be a question about having that visibility for the sidewalks and the pedestrians. So just to wrap up, what we've been looking at is, should we continue and pursue a new residential standard plan for site distance? Again, we say residential, could be called a local street site plan, but basically setting up a new standard plan for only the local streets, leaving the existing standard for the arterials. And the next topic we talked about quite a bit was really striking that balance between the safety needs and the on-street parking demand. And with the existing standard plan that we, we have, we would continue to review all new development projects, office projects, commercial projects and such. We would continue with the existing standard plan for those projects.
If we do a new residential standard plan over the one that we have now that we don't have to get a permit from the Coastal Commission for, do we have to take that to the Coastal Commission and get their approval on it?
No, I don't think we'd have to take a new plan to the Coastal Commission.
Okay.
It's all safety-related.
May I add a couple thoughts to that? I would think that any local plan that we're going to come up with is going to be done with the intent of being least restrictive and impacting the less amount of parking, but not doing so in the expense of safety. So I would think that there would be very little reason to have to go to the Coastal Commission to have an improved plan, and even more reason for the city to have an improved plan that's applicable to the local streets because in the event that there is something serious that happens, then you're going to have somebody that's going to be looking at the city standard and saying, why didn't you enforce that? And so it's helpful for us, and we could say, well, the local streets are different than the arterial streets, but we haven't made up with one, made up one that addresses the community concerns plus the parking pressures that we also have and have to recognize. The other thing that we will have to look at, and very important, is to coordinate the red line with also the, the property improvements like the fences and the landscaping because you can't impact parking at the expense of allowing people to build and impact the visual for that point of view. So I think from the city's point of view of a, kind of a liability and a protection, it's a good idea that they're bringing this up for us to look at.
The only reason I bring it up is the Coastal Commission has traditionally asserted that it has jurisdiction over virtually any action we take that affects the supply of parking. So if we're going to paint more curbs red, we're obviously going to reduce the linear amount of curb space available for parking.
Well, I can't promise that the Coastal Commission wouldn't say that we should bring it to them. I'm just agreeing with Steve. I think that we would take the position not and have to argue with them if they did. But I think that as long as these efforts are focused on safety, they'd be hard-pressed to deny our process as long as it shows that it's not done with the intent to reduce parking.
And I think as long as it's done so that it isn't just the streets that are closest to the beach that would be used by beachgoers.
And I think that's the position that the city took successfully eight or 10 years ago after we did a parking management plan for the Balboa Peninsula. I think we focused on Bay Avenue, and there were a number of areas where we increased the red curb for safety.
There's any further questions?
Well, I'd just make one comment. I don't know that one residential standard plan is going to, you know, is going to work. It seems to me that maybe we're going to need some different standards for different neighborhoods, so that maybe the site distances required on Balboa Island, say, are different than Corona Del Mar and different than the peninsula. In fact, some areas of the peninsula might have differentiations that you have more than one standard out there.
Yeah, Councilman, I would agree. I think that there are some opportunities to do some unique things in different parts of town. You know, even though the prima facie residential speed limit is 25 miles an hour, certainly the narrow streets of Balboa are different than, than some of the wider streets that may occur in, say, the Heights. So I think we need to look at that. I think, I think you're right, we need to be sensitive to that. And we may end up with several different standards for maybe area-specific type standards, and I think that we've... And I think that we'd want to be able to bring them back to you for essentially a final approval, because we want to have an approved standard plan, which would be defendable in a court. In addition to that, I also wanted to get some direction from you folks tonight on the issue of the 15-foot triangle and the basis of safety. Should we be looking at that a little harder in the way of code enforcement, or should we just continue on the, kind of the, case-by-case basis?
Steve, I think one thing that came out of this presentation for me, you know, seeing some of those slides, is that there are some problems as far as landscaping and also fences and what people have done. And when we're trying to weigh the safety issue versus the parking issue, it seems like the first thing that should go should be the landscaping or any of those impediments, you know, that certainly could influence safety. And so I would like to ask Council, if you feel, you know, like I do, that in terms of talking about enforcement and where our priorities should be, that that should be one of the priorities, at those intersections, that there are site distance issues, that we really need to get tough on landscaping and also any, you know, building that has been done that may be over at the allowances.
Well, I would ask this question, and that is that if you're going to do that and keep the same staff resources, then something else you're doing is going to have to suffer, and what is it going to be?
Well, I wonder if before we go into enforcement, too, we might do some education, because I think most people are not aware of the requirement. And whether we could put something in the water bill, or in the newsletter, or something, I mean, obviously, we wouldn't get huge compliance, but it would be a first step. And then also, at least when we came with enforcement of some sort, we would have prepared the ground a little better.
And we can look at landscaping and these other issues in terms of a new standard, and whether that's the way we want to proceed in enforcing landscaping and those issues. And maybe also look at it together with the zoning code and those types of, they tie together as to how we want to look at the landscaping and whether there is an obstruction there.
Well, I think one of the things we can be proactive about is those modifications, if they are modifications, come through, the zoning administrator to look at those. Because just because someone's foot is wall is one foot above doesn't mean it's illegal. They could have obtained the necessary permits for that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, this has been good for staff. I think if we can get on to the next issue, we do have some time constraints by some of the people who will be participating.
Okay, I'm going to just open it up quickly for public comments. Since I see someone in the back there chomping at the bit to make a public comment.
W.R. Dildy, lived down on the Balboa Peninsula, been a property owner since 1964, I think. I've heard everything in this session that I was going to say. I think it's fantastic. Include the Balboa specific plan. I would love for you to drive down my alley with the trash cans. Now, I'm not going to tell you the full thing. I bet you 80% of the trash cans sent out day after day in the public right-of-way. Code enforcement has been out there, they've had a city surveyor out there, he has verified. One of the gripes I hear is, we're grandfathered in. Well, I've offered to go to court for the city in an illegal duplex that had been converted to pride, triplex. There's a lot of those I'd be happy to go back and convert to and say, when that alley was sand and I was assessed and all the rest of us were assessed to pay for it, those trash cans were elsewhere. And one of the things you're talking about is line of sight. I would like to caution you, I believe it's at Medina in Balboa, there's a right-hand turn only, it's where the street becomes spread out. Another thing, we've got a severe problem there at Cypress in Balboa with that old 1920s duplex motel still standing there, where when I walked to the post office, undoubtedly, there's a car sitting there trying to make a turn and maybe a left, right-hand turn only. And the other thing is down where the Balboa Market is, in the alleyway exit from your city parking lot, it might be a left turn only would be helpful. But the idea, this trash container, put it in the water bill, that was one of the things I was going to say. And maybe highlight or put it in red ink or do something in that part where the owner has responsibility when he's not there, that it's not just the tenants, because that's a big problem. The landscaping and whatnot, a couple of us, in a six-pack of beer, went out on two days and cleaned up a place. We went in the line of sight where our intersecting alley is, there was a big pine tree, we went out and trimmed it up, ready to go to jail if need be, but we found a neighborhood watch sign and a no-parking alley sign. But there's a lot of that. One thing that, reading this, and this is the first time I've seen this, is if we had CCNRs back in the 40s, we wouldn't have these problems. And I can tell you from personal experience in Cameo Shore, building the house in 1960, what CCNRs can do for you. The other thing is, the whole code enforcement is intended to protect and preserve the charm of the residential neighborhoods and the overall quality of life in Newport Beach. I think when city employees or code enforcement sees some of these obvious things, they should log them down and then maybe go back. Maybe we're going to have to look at a, get some people, get old Jim Sinisak back out of here out of retirement.
He is back, I saw him this morning.
Uh-oh. But, you know, a concentrated effort and a well-planned program, I think in Cronin Del Mar, West Newport, and on the Balboa, at least in the central area, we've got some severe problems. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, we will close public comments and move on to our next item, which is a PERS actuary, I believe is going to enlighten us on pensions and retirement obligations and such.
Members of the council, I'm not the PERS actuary, but several months ago, there's a lot of discussion about the city's unfunded pension liability. There was questions from council, there was, I was getting calls from reporters. And at that time, I, when talking to city manager, we thought it would be good to have our PERS actuary actually come down and explain how rates are set, what our unfunded liability is, whether it's a good thing or a bad thing, rate smoothing, it's new, PERS has adopted new rate smoothing rules. And so I've invited Rick Santos, who's our actual actuary, to come down and speak to the council about these issues. Rick's a great guy, he's very helpful to us. He's one of the, I won't say one of the few, but he's one of the people up at PERS that when you call him, he picks up the phone, and he's a great speaker. So with that, I'd like to introduce Rick Santos.
Thank you, and thanks for having me here as well. So you guys ready for this, an actuarial lesson here?
Sure.
I was asked to explain to you the rate-setting process, what the actuaries do at CalPERS to produce your rate on an annual basis. Probably the best way to look at it really quickly is in terms of one member. And what we try to do is, we try to figure out at retirement, how much money is going to be needed to pay for this member's benefit until he and his, he or she and his beneficiaries pass. And to calculate the value of that benefit at retirement, the actuary makes several assumptions. He makes assumptions on if this person is going to actually be able to work his entire career and not terminate, quit, and he doesn't die, doesn't go out on disability and things like that. And we make assumptions, and then we place a value on that benefit at retirement, and then we translate it into today's dollars, we calculate it as a present value. And one of the things that determines the value of that benefit, that's very important, is the actuarial assumption, the interest rate that the PERS actuary thinks that the investments are going to earn at CalPERS. So then what we do is, we take that value, that benefit in today's dollars, and we kind of carve it up, and we allocate it to each year of this member's working career. And hopefully, if the actuaries do it right, we make that dollar amount as a level percent of this person's pay, so your rate stays relatively stable throughout this member's working career. What happens, though, is that the actuaries at PERS never, ever get it right. They never get the assumptions right. We never, that people don't die on cue, they don't terminate on cue, they don't go out on disability. And the big thing that we can't predict is the asset returns. And to the extent that the asset returns deviate, if we just leave out the liability gains and losses for a while, to the extent that the assets don't return what the PERS actuary thinks, which is 7 and 3/4%, we have to make adjustments to this annual premium in your rate. And that adjustment actually is designed to get you back on track, to get you back to 100% funded. When the assumptions or when the investment returns are below what we assume, it creates an unfunded liability, because the investments aren't earning what we think they are going to earn. So then we ask you folks to contribute more. And the plan right now, in fact, we can focus on just the unfunded liability side. Right now, Newport Beach's, both their safety plan and their miscellaneous plan have an unfunded liability, and most of it is attributable to the investment returns that we've had in the early 2000s. Now, about three years ago, or two years ago, PERS decided to do something called rate stabilization. And what they do is, they take the investment gains and losses, the asset gains and losses that we see each year, and we only recognize 1/15th of that, and we incorporate that into your rate. And then we take the, that asset gain and loss, and all the other liability gains and losses on the demographic side, and we amortize that over a rolling 30-year period. In other words, each year, we start off and we take the unfunded liability and we amortize it over 30 years. And then next year, you have a new set of gains and losses, and we take that and accumulate it with what has happened in the past, and we again continue to amortize it over 30 years, rolling 30-year amortization. What that means is that the unfunded liability, since it's a 30-year rolling amortization payment, the unfunded liability or the principal balance of the unfunded liability never starts to decrease. You're never making a payment that's large enough to offset the interest cost, okay? Any questions so far? That's a big one there. Okay, so theoretically, what's happening is the unfunded liability is growing, it is continuing to grow. But the plan, though, however, is actually improving, its funded status is improving, even though the unfunded liability is growing, the funded status is gravitating, or the health of the plan is moving more towards 100% funded. And the easiest way to say that without explaining it in great detail is that the magnitude of the unfunded liability relative to the size of the plan, the amount of assets that are in existence, as you go out into the future, the size of the plan and the amount of the assets in the plan tend to dwarf the unfunded liability. Unfunded liability becomes a very inconsequential part of the overall plan. This is in theory. This is what the actuaries looked at when they came up with these rate stabilization measures, to ensure that the integrity of the plan remains intact, that this is not going to do something that's going to damage the fund or make it to where folks won't receive their benefits. So while it's true that the unfunded liability does grow, the funded status of the plan does gravitate towards 100%. And we see that in the actuarial evaluations that have been put out over the last three years. In fact, one of your staff actually gave me a list, or a history of the funded status of the plan on a market value basis, when we consider the market value of the assets of the plan. And the plans actually has, your plans right now in total are 88% funded on a market value basis, and the miscellaneous plan is 96% funded. This is, by the way, as of June 30th of 2005. We are, PERS works on a two-year lag with respect to the data. And your safety plan is 83% funded on a market value basis. And that's come up from, the safety plan was 75% funded two years, and the miscellaneous plan was 87% funded two years ago. So they've actually gone a long way into moving towards 100% funded in the last two or three years, because of the good investment returns we've had.
So I guess I have a question. You said that the unfunded portion is always growing?
It is, the magnitude of the unfunded.
But what if the returns that year are in excess of 7 and 3/4%? It should go down.
And we've seen, we've seen that the last three years, but remember that I mentioned that what the actuaries do when they decided to smooth rates is to only recognize 1/15th of the asset gains and losses. So what's happening is, the actuarial funded ratio, or the unfunded liability, is actually increasing because you're not making any principal payments on the balance. However, on a market value basis, the true dollars that are in your plan, the actuary is only recognizing 93 or 94% of that. So the true unfunded liability on a market value basis is somewhat smaller than the unfunded liability calculated on a smoothed basis, which is what's used to set your rates. So what I'm saying is, you've got about 5 or 6% as of this valuation of assets that the actuary isn't even recognizing because of smoothing, and it's kind of saved away for a rainy day. And that's going to continue to get better. We had good investment returns, well in excess of 7 and 3/4% for the prior fiscal year, and right now, we're at 13.7% for this fiscal year. So I would think that, without looking at any numbers, that your rate is going to gradually go down over the next three or four years, but not a lot, because the actuary, again, is not going to recognize a lot of those gains that we're experiencing and that we're going to experience in the future.
In terms of this concept of the unfunded liability continuing to grow, if the city were to send you a check for $60 million, which is our current unfunded liability approximately, then in three or four years, we might have another $10 or $20 million liability, or some liability, unfunded liability?
That's true. You could have another large surplus in three or four years, or you could have a large unfunded liability again in three or four years. The fact is, like I mentioned earlier, the actuaries don't get it right. They never get it right. They never predict what the markets are going to do, and they never predict who's going to quit your plan. So the true fact is, is that at the point in time that you send us $60 million or whatnot, your unfunded liability will be zero, but I can promise you, a year from now, you're going to have either an unfunded liability or a surplus once again.
So Steve, to further to your question, you could easily wind up in a situation where on a market value basis, you have surplus funding, but still reporting on an actuarial basis, an unfunded liability of a significant amount, because of the actuarial regimens and assumptions that are used.
Because of the smoothing methods. And in fact, on an actuarial basis, this chart here shows that you are 85% or 80, yeah, 85% funded, and you're 88% funded on a market value basis. So as of this valuation, you had 3% of your assets saved away to offset any future losses. And with the next two valuations, I'm assuming that you're going to probably have about between 7 and 10% of your assets saved away to offset future losses as well.
So, and I want to thank you, by the way, for the presentation and the Finance Committee, because that was very, very informative about how these numbers work. And for the public out there trying to understand the importance of the unfunded liability to the city, what I heard you say, and I want to make sure we have this right, is that the unfunded liability, if you make your payments, is going to grow, because there's a negative amortization factor built into that. That number's going to get bigger. But the real number that affects our ability to pay these pension costs is really the market value, and that number is getting smaller. In fact, our market value, if we would do it just as you've done, shows that our pensions are in much better shape, or better shape than the unfunded liability would suggest. And with a couple of more good years of PERS performance, the market value, in fact, may get to 100% of that liability, even though we have an unfunded liability on the books. Is that fundamentally correct?
That's exactly correct. The unfunded liability that everybody sees, unfortunately, is the unfunded liability on a smoothed basis. So it incorporates three years of good investment returns, where 95% of those investment returns aren't embedded in that unfunded liability. So I kind of resist the notion when somebody looks at the funded statuses on an actuarial basis. I think the only reason we do this, or actuaries do this, when they smooth assets, is because to keep your rates from doing this. If we were to set your rates based on a market value rate of return on the portfolio, your rates would follow, it would chase the market returns from year to year. But if the actuaries are correct, and statistics work, and we all believe in the law of large numbers, then we can assume that over the long run, we're going to earn 7 and 3/4%. Hence, we can start to smooth a little bit and start to remove some of those fluctuations under the pretense that we will get these returns in the long run. The portfolio that PERS invests in is very volatile. It's about 60% equities, 25% fixed income, and the rest is in real estate and alternative investments. Those types of asset allocations create highly variable rates. And in fact, I had a matrix of rates here somewhere over the last 25 years. There were returns that were nearly 30% in one year, and there were returns that were down to negative 10% each year. So you can see, the actuaries, it's nearly impossible to, for us to try to predict what's going to happen to the plan in the short term. But in the long run, we do a pretty good job.
And so, again, the number, the public... And so, again, the number the public should focus on is the market value as opposed to the actuarial liability in order to determine the real health of our pension funding status.
I believe so.
And I think you share with us that I think PERS is going to start reporting information that better reflects the actual market value as opposed to the unfunded actuarial liability.
Yeah, I think in today's political environment that we live in and what's been going on with respect to the defined benefit plans, the chief actuary there at PERS actually has made a decision that he didn't want to necessarily quote the funded statuses on an actuarial basis because he thought that that was an unfair measure of the true health of these plans. The true health of these plans, I think, is better indicative, or the funded status on a market value basis better indicates the true health of this plan and maybe, maybe looks at it more in terms of a termination liability. In other words, this is the amount of assets you have on a true market value basis. This is the amount of liabilities you have. The gap is what you still owe to the plan if the plan were to terminate. So I do, I think it's fair to look at, if you're simply looking at the health of the plan, I think it's much more fairer to look at it on a market value basis. The actuarial basis is just a technique that actuaries do to set the rates, nothing more.
As cities go in California, how do we stand as far as the percentage on a market basis?
Well, your miscellaneous plan, I didn't realize this today until I got this. I mean, I do a lot of plans, so it's unfortunate that I can't focus on each of these plans individually. But your miscellaneous plan is at 96% funded right now on a market value basis. That fares very favorably from what I remember in last valuation. Most of the miscellaneous plans were in the low 90s. I had a handful that were actually at 100 and over 100. There were actually a couple of Orange County miscellaneous plans that were over 100. But you're in the, I would say, upper 50th percentile beings that you're above 95%. Most of them that I saw were still in the low 90s. For your safety plan, 83%, that's still a tad low. I think that the safety plans are starting to hit mid-80s and starting just barely to pierce into the upper 80s. So I think you're a little low relative to the rest of your peers on your safety plan.
Thank you. Was that it?
I'm here for questions if you have any.
Questions, Nancy?
Rick, maybe you could talk about the two components that go into setting the rates for PERS?
Okay. One of them is the annual premium that we talked about earlier, where we calculate the present value of the member's benefit at retirement. And again, we chop that up and allocate it over each member's working career. And that's the annual premium that you would have to fund to pay for this person's benefit. And in the absence of any adverse experience relative to what the actuaries think is going to happen, you'd never have to contribute anything more than that annual premium or that normal cost. When the assumptions don't conform to what the actuaries think, then the plan is off track. It's either greater than 100% funded, or it's less than 100% funded. And when that happens, then the actuary will adjust your rate accordingly. If an unfunded liability exists, we're going to adjust your rate upward. And if a surplus exists, we adjust it downward. And those are the two components of your rate. The annual premium and the unfunded liability payment to get you back on track to 100% funded at the point in time where we think you should. Well, we always would like to see you at 100% funded. So we shoot for that target at each valuation date. So the other piece is just an adjustment to get you back on track.
So Rick, what that sounds to me like is when the miscellaneous employees go to not having an unfunded liability, they're 100% funded, but the public safety maybe is at 88 or 90, that that second component of the miscellaneous rate setting will be off for miscellaneous, but not for safety?
It will, but it has to, according to PERS rules right now, the actuarial unfunded liability has to be zero. Just because your market, I think you alluded to this earlier, you're probably in a year or two going to have a situation where your market value funded ratio for your miscellaneous plan is going to go over 100%. You're going to have surplus on a market value basis. But since your actuarial or smoothed unfunded liability is still going to be positive, you're going to have a positive component or adjustment to your rate. We're going to adjust your annual premium upward. It's, you know, it's a safety net essentially is what it is. What I can tell you this is whether you like rate stabilization or not, it does a good job. It keeps your rate stable. They don't go, they don't, they don't move. They don't go up and down that much. And one of the good things is that since we have had two or three good years of returns and we stabilized rates when rates were relatively high, you've got a lot in the bank right now. And it's going to take a whole heck of a lot, a whole, several years of bad market returns before you would start to see any increase in your rate. So one of the nice things is, is that if you could stomach your rates right now, they're going to be that way for a while. Even if we had, I'd venture to guess, three or four bad years of returns, I have a feeling that your rates aren't going to move much from where they are right now.
I have a question, maybe you can comment on. I've heard that there are some cities or governmental agencies that are going out to the market and, you know, borrowing money to pay this unfunded liability. Do you have any thoughts on that, whether it's a good thing or a bad thing?
Well, I won't, I won't tell you whether I personally think it's a good thing or a bad thing. But I will tell you that some of the issues that you need to consider. One of the biggest things that is going to happen is that if you were to send us $60 million to get your unfunded liability to zero, PERS is going to take that money, and they're going to invest it in 60% equities and 25% fixed income, and the rest in, you know, riskier assets. Consequently, your rate, your future rate from that point forward is going to be more volatile. You have more assets that are exposed to PERS's investment or asset allocation. So your, your rate is going to be more volatile, albeit it's going to be mitigated somewhat because of rate stabilization. That's true. So what I would say to you is let's assume, let's look at both sides of the equation. Let's say you send us the $60 million bucks, and then PERS has three or four bad years of returns. Your rate's probably not going to change a whole lot, but your unfunded liability, you're going to be back into the hole again. You're going to have an unfunded liability that at some point in time, you're going to have to pay back again. So you could give us this money, and you could have an unfunded liability again in three or four years. On the flip side, you could give us all this money, and PERS has these tremendous investment returns, and all of a sudden, you're 120% funded on a market value basis and perhaps even 110% funded on an actuarial basis. Then what are you going to do? You've got all that money sitting there in the PERS account. You can only use a portion of it, a 30-year amortization portion of it, to offset your annual premium. So you've got a lot of surplus sitting in your PERS account that you can't do anything with anymore. It's just sitting there that you're going to have to use over time as the actuarial methods unlock this surplus to use to offset the annual premium. So it's basically, if investment returns do very well, you've got an illiquid asset sitting there that you can't really do much with until you can just wait to use it to offset your premium.
So why are these cities doing that?
I think it's public perception. I think that the fact that you have this large unfunded liability, and we're not doing much with it, it's growing, that gives the appearance that, that we're not acting responsibly and paying down this debt. I think it's totally, has to do with public perception.
There's, there's one other reason. And that is, on a current contribution basis, if you replace the obligation to pay this unfunded liability, that component of the rate with a borrowing at a lesser interest rate, there's an interest rate arbitrage of about two percentage points. And so your actual annual budgeting for PERS contribution costs can be beneficially affected. That's another reason.
There is, but you also have to realize that you are, there are risks involved by doing this. It's not just a simple matter is if I can pay 5 and 3/4% on my debt, public debt, but PERS is charging me 7 and 3/4, it's a good deal. It's a little more than that. You need to consider the added volatility and the risk that you're taking, and the upside and the downside, and the opportunity cost. There's a tremendous opportunity cost involved here by issuing pension obligation bonds. Once you issue those bonds, they're on your books. You're liable for them for 30 years. It could very well be that you don't do anything. PERS has good returns here in the next three or four years. People come to the PERS board and say, you know, we've got all this money stuck aside in rate stabilization. We want you to do something. PERS acquiesces and releases some of these assets. And all of a sudden, you are at 100% funded in three or four years, and you really didn't have to pay off, use, issue a P O B to pay off that debt. So that's something to consider as well. What I was telling the folks earlier in the finance committee is that if you trust the actuarial process and you think it works, then at some point in time, in the long run, we'll realize our assumptions, our investment returns, and your fund will gravitate towards 100%. I can almost promise you that over the next 20 to 30 years, your fund is going to be up above 100%. It's going to fall back down, and it's going to keep doing it. It's been doing that. I mean, we've, PERS has been around for 75 years. I look back, and I even look at your plan for the last 20 years, and it's done that. You had zero rates for, I think, five or six years in a row in the late 90s, early 90, late 90s, early 2000s. Now you've got rates that are higher now, but they are actually very comparable to the rates that you were paying in the mid to late 80s and early 90s. So it's going to happen again. We're going to go above 100% funded, and at some point in time, this whole cycle will repeat itself. And I'm probably going to be standing here in 15 years having the same discussion with you.
Okay, anybody else have any questions? Thank you. Staff, any questions? Why don't we open up for public comment?
Good afternoon, I'm Chris Street. I'm the Orange County Treasurer. And I think this is wonderful that the city of Newport Beach, I also happen to be a resident of Big Canyon. But I think it's wonderful that the city of Newport Beach is paying attention to these issues. These are very complicated issues that some people think have simple solutions. But I want to give you a little sense of history perhaps, and some of the issues that might weigh on your decision-making. There's a lot of talk about pension obligation bonds as an easy cure. Orange County, in fact, was the pioneer, one of the pioneers for pension obligation bonds. And in 1994, issued pension obligation bonds and thought they would live off the spread and all these positive formulas. And we had lots of beautiful people come in and make presentations. Unfortunately, with this large $300 and some million that we raised in taxable bonds and then invested in the marketplace, the first couple of years, the performance were rather negative. At the same time, the county found itself in bankruptcy. So they not only had the pension challenge, they now have a large loss challenge. One of the beauties of actuaries is they have a sense of history. And hopefully, that sense of history is not really swayed by what is ever currently in vogue or fashion. I think as the actuary for PERS has told you, PERS has a long-term investment strategy. Because of that long-term investment strategy, has adopted a rather aggressive investment posture. I think if any of you sitting here as councilpersons had been managing your mother or father's funds, chances are, they wouldn't be in 60% equity, 25% fixed income, and another 15% in a little bit of real estate, but lots and lots of hedge funds. PERS is a very aggressive portfolio. And if you believe in capital markets, over time, that aggressive portfolio will be rewarded. In between those times, in any one given year, one standard deviation, or what would you expect to have on the left hand and the right hand, could be 9.6% in any direction. So if you're down 9.6% in the first year, you have to also add on the 7 and 3/4% expectation. And all of a sudden, you're down in very large numbers. You get two or three years of this kind of experience. You've created another problem in addition to your pension problem. All investment schemes that seem to have been viable over the long term have used a concept called dollar averaging. If you believe that investments will be positive over a long period of time, and you make level investments, similar to what people do with mutual funds, if you can adopt a long enough scenario, all of history, at least, has seemed to indicate that this is a very positive experience. Those who try to bet in any one window run a rather large risk of bad short-term experience. So I, I think that the concept that PERS has moved to, which is really taking a much more conservative structure on asking you what kind of contributions to make, is in your best interest. Because you represent a government agency, and I happen to be collecting the taxes for that government agency. One thing I can tell you is the stress level in this year's tax collection in the last couple of weeks was rather enormous. Our delinquent payers are up. The stress that we heard on the phone is much, much higher. Will this result on a short-term drop in the revenues that you receive? The answer is no. Because of Prop 13, you'll have a couple of years where this will tend to roll forward, 2% increases across the number of properties you have here in Newport Beach. We'll basically give you the opportunity to have a rising income stream in the next couple of years. Two, three years out, I think you should be very concerned as to what that revenue stream is going to be. This week, I think the county of Sacramento just reassessed 50,000 houses, 50,000 parcels, down 10%. The advantage of PERS's rather conservative banking of the 7% is that can you really afford in a time of falling revenues, and what's probably usually is falling investment performance, to then have PERS come in and charge you a larger contribution requirement? The current system is structured so that you have a rather predictable requirement over a period of time. And it avoids the fluctuation because most cities don't have the luxury of having unusual revenue sources during a bad period of time. So I think the PERS investment structure is appropriate. I think that your funding level, although you may see a number that seems large, this is part of what all government faces today. And I think that, from what I've seen, what I heard from the actuary today, I think the city of Newport Beach is, is well-positioned. They have, their investment posture with PERS should provide good returns over time. And I think it's in your best interest to do level funding. So I think you're doing the right thing. And I'm, as a citizen of Newport Beach, I appreciate the way this is being handled. And I look forward to being your treasurer and collecting those taxes and helping in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. I think Councilman Curry wanted to ask you.
Just a quick, Chris, thank you for coming down, and thank you for your comments and for your leadership at the county. I just wanted to ask, do you share Mr. Santos's view that the real number we should be focusing on is the market value of our retirement assets as opposed to the actuarial liability that gets focused on in the press?
You know, this is really a hard, hard subject, Councilman Curry. I happen to have been brought in after the bankruptcy of Orange County and asked to sit on the Orange County Employees Retirement System in 1996. County was in bankruptcy. We had a $300 million unfunded pension liability. Through some very good work between management and labor, we were able to work together and got that liability from what was costing the county $45 million a year and in a period of bankruptcy, down to zero. We actually had a surplus of almost $600 million. In 1998, I tried to get the plan to invest in bonds. Basically, take that money, lock it up forever, and the county would never have to make a pension obligation again. Unfortunately, at the time, people wanted to put their money in growth stocks, and there was no appetite for doing these kind of investments. Really, a more conservative investment. So I think the headline risk that you have of one large number may seem difficult to take. But I think if you operate on market risk, and then you have a really bad experience, that market risk is going to balloon. And I think if you're going to be in, right now, you're benefiting from the positive investment returns. I think it would just heighten it if you focused on market risk, or market portfolio value. So I'm, I think the process may be difficult for you as councilpersons to deal with in the public of 60 million or 80 million. But this is a rather large business. And government is a big business, and you have to deal with large numbers.
Anyone else? Thank you, Chris. Anybody else, public comments? Seeing none, we'll close public comments. And I think we will adjourn to our closed session. Thank you. See you back at 7 o'clock.